Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the city council meeting for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, to order. Tonight, we will start with prayer. Alderman Jones, can you lead us in prayer tonight?
Let us all stand tonight. Gracious God, our Father, we just thank you. We honor you for being God, and God, all by yourself. We thank you, Lord, tonight, for the gathering that we have tonight, that we will continue to build and bring our city together. Lord, we ask, first of all, that you will forgive all of us of our sins, seen and unseen. Lord, we ask that you would cleanse us from all our rights and sins. Lord, tonight, we are constantly praying for our city, for the attack that the enemy has came upon us with, the overdose, nine people who overdosed, three passed on, and we're asking God that you will strengthen the families and strengthen our city. Lord, we ask that you would bless our mayor, bless every alderman, all heads, all heads of department. We ask that you would bless our first responders, continue to bless the ladies and the men in blue, that they will, as they protect us and watch over us in the city. Lord, we ask tonight that you would give us the wisdom and insight that we need to lead this your city and this your people. Lord, we ask that we will come together like never before, putting aside bickering and partisan divide, that we can become one city and continue to be a blessing in the lives of those in our community. And we will lead by example, by example, showing them what it is to be true leaders, and put ourselves second, and be servants first. Give us all the servant's attitude, that we will love one another like never before. Lord, we ask that you would bless us, bless all of our children and the community, bless everyone here tonight, as we go forward, in Jesus' name we pray. Let us say amen.
Tonight, I see we have a lot of veterans in the council chambers with us. If you wouldn't mind stepping forward, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, if you don't mind, if you're a military veteran, if you'd come forward and lead us?
All veterans, please go forward.
All veterans, alright. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have a lot of public comments tonight, so please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments will be limited to three minutes. No personal tax upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussion of matters which are under currently, under legal review will not be permitted. Again, we do have a lot of people sign up for tonight, and that's excellent, but we can ask if you can keep your comments to three minutes or less, so we can make sure we get through everybody tonight. First up is Karen Spatanski.
I come to you again tonight, and I'm going to try not to speak from the heart, but with many facts. Veterans want to know that you care. So tonight, the facts are, we do have homeless veterans. In 2019, the VAC had about 44 visits from homeless veterans seeking assistance. Catholic charities had 16. In 2020, the VAC had 60 visits from homeless veterans seeking assistance. Catholic charities had 22. In 2021, the VAC had 63 visits from homeless veterans seeking assistance. Catholic charities had 31. The VAC averages about 35,000 a year in financial assistance for the very basic needs for veterans. To be clear, a lot of our VAC and Catholic charities assistance overlaps, so some of our 63 may be part of their 31. But know that all of these veterans are in need. So there's not one or two, there's a lot, and we need to help them. Where do these people go when they come to us? Most of them end up in places like Azzarelli Towers, Midtown, and River Station, because they are low income. We need more housing for them. They need those Section 8 supportive housing units. Yes, the Housing Authority is getting a really nice grant, $2 million, right? Did you know that a chronically homeless person, not just a veteran, but a chronically homeless person costs an average taxpayer over $36,000 a year? $36,000 a year. Cost of a stable, permanent, supportive housing unit reduced that cost by 49.5%. That's almost half. Almost half of that. So some of you have talked about being fiscally responsible. So that is being very fiscally responsible. Cut somebody's homeless cost to a taxpayer in half. So you're talking about $36,000 to $15,000. You're being fiscally responsible by putting the supportive housing unit in Kankakee County. It's free grant money from the Illinois Department of Public Housing that Kankakee County Housing Authority went after for supportive living environment. Saying yes tonight shows the fiscal responsibility by taking those people off the streets, cutting that $36,000 to $15,000. Think of the money that you are going to save the taxpayers every year by taking those veterans off the street. Thank you.
Next is Stan Bobka.
Good evening, council members. My name is Stan Bobka. I served in the United States Marine Corps, and also in the United States Marine Corps Reserve, for a total of 14 years. I am also currently the Commandant at the Kankakee County Marine Corps Elite. Just about every day that I go into public, somebody tells me, "Thank you for your service." Are there any board members here today that served? "Thank you for your service." It wasn't always like that. During and after Vietnam, war, and many veterans came home, were spit on, they were called names, or they were ignored. After 9/11 suddenly changed. America was attacked, and veterans were by and large treated better. Today, our communities have veterans without a home to go to, without a bed to sleep in. They hardly ever, if ever, hear a "thank you for your service." They too serve protecting our people and our country. They need help. They need help to have a place to live, a place to sleep. They need your help. They need you, and all of you, to stand up and say yes to the proposal housing project on South Washington Street. Thank you for allowing me to talk to you today.
Next is David McCleary.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is David McCleary. I served in the Navy Seabees for, I'm a, let me restart that, I'm a Navy CB veteran of 14 years. I've been to Bosnia, Iraq, that's just to name a few. I work with the Veteran Assistant Commission in Kankakee County, where I'm training to become a Veteran Service Officer. I'm here to talk to you about the Veteran Permanent Supportive Housing on Washington Street here in Kankakee. Today, about 6.1 million veterans, which are, is about 28% of all veterans, live in rural areas. It's estimated that it's roughly 60,000 veterans on the street every night nationwide, with 11% that are on the street of my veterans. With that, numbers like that, we should, this should be a major problem for all Americans. Working with the VAC, I see and talk to veterans daily who have served our nation and should not struggle on the brink of homelessness. I have had numerous veterans in the past that have needed housing like this, and I just wish there was more of them around. I've lost friends due to suicide because they were homeless. They just couldn't take it, and I couldn't help them. That is why I'm so passionate about this, like all the veterans here behind me. We have a saying that we hold close to itself, is no one is left behind. We will not leave them behind. And when you place your vote to approve this project, it will place Kankakee on the forefront of communities that is helping keep our heroes safe and home, which is one step to achieving what they fought for. They served us, now let's serve them. This home is perfectly placed for all the assistance that would be needed. The VAC, two blocks away. Catholic charities, right across the tracks. And then Salvation Army, right down the street. The VAC has a bus that takes veterans every day to Heinz, that picks up at the depot. So it's perfectly located. The home will be an asset to the community for many years to come, and the potential to help countless number of veterans. Now, working together, we can end homelessness in our community, so I ask you to vote yes to our veterans. Just remember, they served us, now let's serve them. Thank you for your time.
Next, Rebecca McCleary.
Good evening. I, unlike them, my name is Rebecca McCleary, and I am not a veteran, and I don't work at the VAC. I am married to the man who just spoke, though. He's a 14-year veteran, and I fully support the Veteran Living, Supported Living Project, wholeheartedly. I want to take you back to September 12th, 2001, the day after the United States was attacked. The whole country came together to support anything and everything that we could, that we could, to make sure our country was safe. People who had never considered joining the military signed that blank check to do what they could to protect their country, including my brother. Most of those people had no idea what they were truly getting themselves into, including my brother. You might be asking yourself, "Why I'm bringing up 9/11?" Well, it's because Kankakee has the opportunity to have that same post-9/11 feeling and give back to those who fought for our protection. You see, a lot of men and women came home physically whole, but not mentally. They witnessed and experienced things that no one should ever have to. As I said, my husband is a Navy veteran, and he suffers from PTSD. He came home physically whole, he is not mentally whole, and we struggle daily with that. Without the support of our family, he could very easily be one of those veterans in need of this Supported Living Project. The access to this type of facility would give those veterans the resources they need to rehabilitate their lives into one that they can be proud of. Our veterans should be held to the highest regard because of the sacrifices they've made for each and every one of us. Voting to support this Veteran Supported Living Project is voting to be a proud American. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak again. I wasn't going to speak last time. I was worried I was going to say something wrong. But then I realized saying nothing was saying something wrong. You've heard our heartfelt speeches, you've heard our pleas. This project needs to be voted yes on. But there are still people on the fence. There's talk that some people are on the fence because of the money. Some are worried about who's getting paid, where the money is going to, how it's being spent, but let me ask you this. Did you take into consideration the hundreds of thousands of checks that were written to the United States government over the, over the years? The checks that every single one of these veterans wrote, in the amount of everything and anything, including their life? Because if you did, this would be a unanimous vote of yes. If you want to talk about the money, then I think it's only fair that we talk about that. Talk about the lives that were lost, the struggles that the other veterans are facing because of the checks that they wrote. So that should be addressed. These men and women could have chose a different path, a path that could have made them a fortune, to where they could live their lives normally. But they chose to protect you, me, everybody in this room. They chose you, your life, your family, over money. Now you're sitting here with a warm bed and a roof over your head waiting for you when you go home. You're choosing the money over them. This is a building that has the potential to house hundreds of veterans for years to come, not just 14, but hundreds. You have a chance to make a difference in these people's lives and make Kankakee a better place. Wouldn't you want the money to go to something like that? Something that will save the lives of people, rather than it go to an apartment building for four people, or office buildings that Kankakee really doesn't need? This is a place that will genuinely save lives. These veterans who need our help have lost the voice, because they have lost hope of anything good happening for them. They have lost hope in humanity because of situations just like this. I am asking you to set aside the money, to set aside the politics, and actually look at the human being, the human being that is asking for your help. Because if it weren't for them, you guys wouldn't be sitting here with the opportunity to have the amazing jobs that you have, the houses that you get to go home to. They made it possible because they're protecting all of us. Look behind me. They did that. These people who are giving a voice to the veterans without a home, without hope, and who are in need. This right here, this is what community is. Standing up for the people, not the money. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Mike Peak.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, myself, I really wasn't planning on coming up here either, because I'm not much of a public speaker. But I am a Vietnam veteran. I am a member of the Disabled American Veterans in Kankakee County. I am affiliated with the VAC, so I know well and good what they go through and what good they do for all these people. And I know that everyone that's coming up here is speaking from their hearts, so we're asking that, that you vote this thing in. It can do nothing but help these. Now, I've heard of veterans that don't want to come in, you know? They don't want a home, they don't want... But I think there's enough of us that can talk them into it, you know? They just need to know there's some people willing to help them out, to recognize them as a, as a person. And like I said, I'm hoping everybody votes just here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me to come for round three. Ironically, as I come here tonight, many of you that are quite younger than me, we're here to support veterans. Right across the street was the original National Guard armory, that my father and many of those that are since deceased left to fight in World War II with the 132nd Infantry Division, later going to the Americal Division, and fought over 30-some months in the Solomon Islands. Now, we have a chance tonight, we are their heirs. It is our job, it is incumbent upon us, to further their history. We have younger folks that have served, so it's a progression. I know there's, you hear a lot of talk, but my father instilled one cliche he had in my brother and I, and I have used it to the fullest, and I never backed off. He said, "You can always go another step and fire another round, even when you're falling." Well, I'm not fallen yet, but I'm going to keep firing them rounds until I can't do it anymore. And I believe the quickest way that you can say, "Thank you for your service," is to honor those ladies and gentlemen that served our country by voting yes on this issue. Now, I know I won't get into politics, I don't like that, we have enough of it, but I know there's a lot of money at stake here for some people. Let's don't kid ourselves. We can look at each other, and we know why you're here, and some people have a different agenda. The agenda should be what's best for the veterans in Kankakee County. It's been said that societies are judged by the way they treat, serve, and take care of their veterans. Kankakee can be the leader, and we discussed that before, why not the other communities? We got a chance to do that. The veterans aren't asking for a handout, we're asking for a hand up. How many of you would like to go out tonight and sleep somewhere under a garbage can, when it's cold outside? Just think of that. So when you vote tonight, I believe you'll do the right thing, and I'm more or less, I'm sure you will, and just think of the pride you can have when you see this thing come to fruition, and you're walking down the street and you say, a veteran says, "Good evening, thank you for your service." I voted for that, to help you, and that's only a small portion, but you start picking away at the ice, it pretty well melts. So thank you for your time, I'm honored to be here, my fellow brothers and sisters are there, and always remember, you can always go another step and fire another round, even when falling, and you folks have the chance to do that. Thank you very much.
Robert Ellington Snipes.
To the Mayor, to the distinguished members of the council, I rise to tell you that the Kankakee County Housing Authority has approved, on their part, this particular project. So, I'm here to remind you, when I see a military veteran, I hear people say, "Thank you for your service." Tonight, I hope, when we leave here, I'm able to hear and tell you, "Thank you for your vote." But if not, I can pose this on with my weak voice, "How dumb thou art! How dumb thou art!"
My name's Rebecca Parks, and I'm the Behavioral Medicine Community Liaison or Business Development Coordinator at Riverside. And so I just wanted to share a little bit about what we're doing at Riverside to assist with veterans. One of those things is a partnership with a local nonprofit, Buddy Check 22, and we offer seven free therapy sessions to any veteran in our county through our Well in Mind program, which is our EAP program at Riverside, in person or over the phone. We also are working with Project Headspace in Tanning to create an advocacy program, where if anybody comes through our emergency room with mental health or substance concerns, and they are a veteran, we would connect them to an advocate and either set them up with programming and mental health services at Riverside, or whatever is best for them. So just wanted to share what we are doing to assist with that concern as well. Thanks.
Tim Weston.
So my name's Tim Weston, I am the Manager of Employment and Workforce Planning with Riverside Healthcare, working alongside of Rebecca, as well as Phil Cambic, our President and CEO. I had a great conversation with him just this morning, where he expressed, obviously, his regret that he could not make it tonight, but he wanted me to express to all of you, sitting around your tables here, how much Riverside is in support of this housing project specifically for veterans. One of my major goals, selfishly, has been to be Veterans in the, the Kankakee County Veterans Employer of Choice. We have about 60 or 70 employed veterans currently. My goal is to double that within the next two years. This is a great opportunity for us to actually connect with some folks who are in need of employment. One of the things that, again, I hear is a common theme, as just one of the concerns of this project, is the financial drain that it could have. And again, I just want to make sure that it's clear, that these folks, that this project would be helping, have not been a drain. Obviously, they've been a great resource to our country, they've been a great service to our country, as well as our local community, and we like to connect them with jobs to keep that work going. So again, just wanted to express that on behalf of Riverside Healthcare, as our commitment to these veterans that this project can serve. Thank you.
Eric Hanson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I will, I'm Eric Hanson, I'm the Attorney for the Housing Authority. I promise you, I will not sing, I don't have the voice of those Commissioner Snipes. However, I do want to encourage you, all of you, to vote for the Veterans Housing Project that's in front of you tonight. This is a project that is, will address a serious need here in Kankakee. It's a project that will change, and in some times, in some instances, save the lives of veterans. It's a project that has, as you see here tonight from some of the comments already, a project that has already begun to grow some connections and some partnerships in the community. It's a partner, it's a project that has received the recommendation of your city staff. It's a project that was unanimously recommended for approval by your planning board. It's a project that was unanimously recommended for approval by your planning board. It's a project that received $2.9 million from the Illinois Housing Development Authority. And it's a project that's right for this community. So on behalf of the Housing Authority, we ask that you vote yes for the veterans. Thank you for your time.
Jake Lee?
Good evening, Mayor, and I'll pull this down a little. City Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to stand before you tonight and to speak on behalf of veterans. I myself served in the United States Navy, went to Afghanistan and other places in the world, serving this great country. I can't really add much to what has already been said, but what I can do is just encourage you all to vote yes and support this project. Our veterans have answered the call for their...for most of their lives, and they continue to answer the call as they protect us abroad in this very hour. And so I say to us, to you, tonight, to answer the call for the veterans and vote yes. Thank you so much.
Carl Aldridge?
My name is Carl Aldridge. I live in the Second Ward, and I came here tonight to let you know that I was homeless. I'm a veteran. And what you seem to be trying to accomplish is very, very complex, very, very enormous. What you're offering is very, very little. You need to delve into this thing a little bit more. Can you look around this room and tell, just by looking, who is a veteran, who is not? Because there are some people here that are not veteran. Can you tell who's a police officer at your door and who is not? Because sometimes who knocks at your door with a black suit on is not a police officer. It happens. There's still some things that are missing, still some pieces that are missing. If you guys are trying to do a transformation, transform a person from homelessness to working as a citizen, that's going to be hard, but it can be done. But you've got to have a plan. I haven't heard plan. I heard only about buying fourteen apartments. Now, if that's what this is all about, that's not nearly enough to get the job done. I don't know who's expecting more, but fourteen, buying fourteen apartments is really a slap in my face. You're going to need at least thirty. If them...if the numbers that I heard tonight are correct, if you're trying to do the thing that I think you're trying to do, it's not enough. You're going to need more, more money. That facility is not big enough. It's not fourteen people who...who's going to do the choosing? Who's going to be the first fourteen? And the rest going to sleep out on the street for how long? Two years, three years? Let's talk about it. There's a lot of things. I can go on and on, but I only got three minutes. And I'm telling you to vote no.
Eric Peterson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. Thank you again for having me here. I know I've spoken a couple of times, but just to briefly reiterate, my name's Eric Peterson. I'm the founder of Project Headspace and Timing, a local nonprofit that works to get veterans, along with their community's nature and themselves, along with trying to get them over to whatever mental health treatment that they may need. Now, I'd spoken a couple of times as well. I don't want to stand here and try to speak from the heart again. Instead, I elected to speak the words of one of our board members of my organization, Carrie Stevenson, who is also a community psychologist and a professor at KCC. While she couldn't be here tonight, she asked me to read these words. "My name is Carrie Stevenson. I am a community psychologist and professor at KCC. I'm sorry I'm unable to be there tonight in person. I am home with sick children, but I wanted to write in support for our veteran community. As a community psychologist, I often joke that one of the main things we do is explain what community psychologists do. Simply put, we examine patterns of group and contextual factors and investigate how to change the environment to empower the people within it to thrive. I felt called to support the veteran community when I read an article about the Gulf Wars, explaining that we had lost more soldiers to suicide than in combat. Our troops are dying at home, and that's not just a military problem, it's a community problem." One that prompts so many questions, what is going on here that allows this to happen? How are communities failing our veterans, and what can we do to help? My own research echoes scores of other studies revealing that veterans often report feeling disconnected from their communities when they return. One Kankakee area veteran told me that I didn't feel at home anymore in my own town. Research shows that connection is the strongest protective factor against veteran suicide, and so we must ask ourselves, how can we enhance connection within the community? Doing so can literally save lives. Another alarming realization is a staggering number of veterans without stable housing. More than one out of ten people without housing are U.S. veterans. The lack of affordable housing is the most prominent factor in our nation's homelessness crisis, so it stands to reason that increasing housing availability can lessen this issue. Supporting a living facility to house veterans is a clear message to them. You belong here. This is your home, and we are your community. This is an opportunity for us to serve those who served, and this is an opportunity too critical to pass. And while I don't want to reiterate any of the things that have been said already, one thing that I will say that I don't think has been said already is despite the issues to get this housing, Veterans Housing Project to pass, despite all of that, knowing everything that I know now, knowing the pain and the struggles and the phone calls, if war was on our doorstep tomorrow, would you go? Because I would. And I'm not trying to get these guys to re-enlist behind me, but I'm willing to bet they would too. We're still going to handle all these phone calls regardless of what happens to this. The last homeless veteran I dealt with was on December 30th, and yeah, he was local too. All we are asking is for a little support and for you to vote yes. Thank you.
Item five is roll call, City Council.
Brown?
Here.
Johnson? Cobb? Lewis? Navarez? Marzak? Swanson? Crawford? Oseka? O'Brien? Barron? Malone Marshall? Cruz. Thirteen present, one absent.
We have a quorum. Item B, Department Heads?
Passwater? Roach? Kubal? Taylor? Tyson? Tigash? Nelson? Bertram? Hoffman? Roswell? Brewer Watson? Thank you.
Okay, next is item six, the minutes from Monday, January 3rd, 2022. Do we have a motion for approval? Auto Woman Johnson? We have a motion from Auto Woman Johnson. Is there a second? A second from Auto Woman Lewis. Is there any questions, comments, or changes? Seeing none? Roll call?
Brown? Jones? Johnson? Cobb? Lewis? Navarez? Marzak? Swanson? Crawford? Oseka? O'Brien? Barron? Malone Marshall? Thirteen i's, zero n's.
The minutes are passed. Next is item seven. We have no petitions. Next is item eight, Communications, item A.
We have a presentation by the Kankakee Police Department recognizing new officers, Clayton Cahoe, Michael Boating, and Tyler Wenzelman.
I think everybody remembers back in the fall, we had...we presented to you the lateral entry program, and you guys approved that, so we started, began hiring from the lateral entry list back in November, and some of these guys have been on for a little while working for us. So the first one is Michael Vecting. He came up from Roma Park and also St. Anne, did some part-time work for them. Next one is Clayton Cahoe. He was full-time in Iroquois County, did some part-time work in Hoopston and also in Watsika. And the last person here on the right is Tyler Wenzelman. He is from St. Louis, Missouri, originally from Hersher, and he worked two years down in St. Louis, Missouri. So these are the officers that we were able to hire that quick through the program. They have to go through three months of training here with us, after training and a little bit of certification work too, and then they're going to be on the street. So that makes it pretty nice compared to a regular officer that we have to send to the academy and go through the field training program. So these guys were able to get on the street a lot quicker, and we appreciate them and glad they came aboard to our police department. Thanks a lot, guys. You guys have family there, too? Anybody who's got family, anybody else?
Next, under Communication, is item B?
A presentation by the Kankakee Fire Department recognizing Enrique Zaco on his promotion to Lieutenant.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'd like to bring up Enrique Zaco and his wife Samantha, if she's here. We'd like to take a minute to recognize Enrique Zaco's accomplishment. On the 12th of January, last Wednesday, he was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant. We're trying to give his wife an opportunity to hit his badge on his dress uniform. A little bit about Enrique, Enrique has two children. He's a lifelong resident of Bourbon A. He's been with us since 2010, October 2010. He has a bachelor's degree in Fire Science Administration, multiple fire certifications. He's one of our outstanding employees. We're happy to have him as an officer. We expect great things from him, and we can't wait for his next accomplishment. Sam?
Okay, we have no standing committee reports tonight. Next is item 10, the Report of Officers, item A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $1,192,550.87.
Altonan Navarez? We have a motion from Altonan Navarez. Is there a second? We have a second from Altonan Oseka. Is there any questions or comments about the bills? Auto Woman Lewis? That is...do you want to go ahead, Comptroller Kubal?
Mayor, go ahead.
So that is for the cost for sending the three new officers to the academy in Champaign. And my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Passwater, we have, and just recently, we have gotten reimbursed for that. It used to be that the state paid for that, but we have to pay for it upfront now, and then we do...we are getting a reimbursement...reimbursement from the state for that, and we did, I think, in the last two trainees there at Academy, correct?
The last ones we did. So hopefully we will on these too.
Which bill is that? Comptroller Kubal, is that one month, or is that...
Yes, that is for November transactions, like it says, for the entire city. So that amounts to the issue and the city.
There was one large charge. We had a Director Tyson, was there not a...did we have a charge for a renewal? It was a couple thousand dollars, or can you refresh my memory on that one?
Yes, sir. I believe that was for our Microsoft renewal license.
Okay, so there was a larger charge on that month for that. And Altonan, Comptroller Kubal?
We do generally everything from five to 10,000, depending on the needs of the city, anyone given.
And what we can do is we can break those out for you and provide those for you, so you can see what the breakdown is for each department. Sure, right. I do remember we did have that large one. Is there any other comments or questions regarding financials? Roll call?
Brown? Jones? Johnson? Cobb? Lewis? Navarez? Marzak? Swanson? Crawford? Oseka? O'Brien? Barron? Thank you. Malone Marshall? Aye. Thirteen i's, zero n's.
Okay, bills are passed. Next is item B for Environmental Services Utility.
In the amount of $271,820.29.
Auto Woman Swanson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills for the Environmental Service Utility in the amount of $271,820.29.
We have a motion from Auto Woman Swanson. Is there a second? Auto Woman Johnson? We have a second from Auto Woman Johnson. Is there any questions or comments regarding the bills for Environmental Services Utility? Seeing none? Roll call?
Brown? Jones? Johnson? Cobb? Lewis? Navarez? Marzak? Swanson? Crawford? Oseka? O'Brien? Barron? Thank you. Malone Marshall? Aye. Thirteen i's, zero n's.
Bills are approved for Environmental Services Utility. Next is unfinished business. Under unfinished business, new businesses, we have quite a few ordinances here. Just a reminder to everyone that ordinances do require at least eight votes for passage. Next, first is item A.
PB 2021-11-2, an ordinance rezoning certain property located within the city of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois, from its current zoning classification of C2, service commercial, to a new zoning classification of R1, single-family residential at 240 West Station Street.
So this is our second reading for this. Is there a motion for approval? We have a motion from...
Kankakee County, Illinois, from its current zoning classification of C2 service commercial to a new zoning classification of R1 single-family residential at 2040 West Station Street.
Okay, so this is our second reading for this. Is there a motion for approval?
Hold on, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Ossenga, is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions or comments? Cobb?
I just want to make sure, forgive me for being a mailman. I just want to make sure that the address is 2040. I thought I saw someone on the paperwork, I saw 2004. 2040 is correct.
Is there any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Oh, and Johnson.
No.
Ten i's, one extension, zero nay.
Okay, so this ordinance is on the table. Can you read item C, please?
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a group of community residents, veteran housing, for the Kankakee County Housing Development Corporation in the C2 zoning district at 210 to 214 South Washington Avenue in Kankakee.
This is our second reading. Is there a motion for approval? We have a motion from Alderman Swanson, is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions or comments? Cobb?
I just want to make sure, forgive me for being a mailman. I just want to make sure that the address is 2040. I thought I saw someone on the paperwork, I saw 2004. 2040 is correct.
Is there any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
No.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Abstain you to protect the public.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Oh, and Johnson. Ten i's, one extension, zero nay.
Okay, so this ordinance is on the table. Can you read item C, please?
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a group of community residents, veteran housing, for the Kankakee County Housing Development Corporation in the C2 zoning district at 210 to 214 South Washington Avenue in Kankakee.
This is our second reading. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion from Alderman Navarez, is there a second? There's a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Alderwoman Swanson.
I do have some comments. I am kind of quiet about this, other than the people that I have reached out to talk to. And one thing I want to state from the get-go is that I have the utmost respect, thankfulness, and love for every veteran that has served, and folks who even thought of serving, haven't been able to. My father and his two brothers served in World War II. I have two brothers who have served in the Vietnam War. I have nephews who have joined multi-services. If you take a stroll at the Mantino graveyard out on the Woodger Road, I'm related to every grant instructor that is on the stone up there honoring the veterans. I believe that $2.9 million on a facility that maps about 14 people is a disservice to the veterans. Thank you.
Alderman Cobb?
I guess I'm the lone veteran on council, and I just want to thank my fellow brothers, thank you for your service as well. I have to agree with, with, you know, Brother Aldrich, what's the plan, and what happens after eight to 14 veterans? I must admit that money there concerned me. I think we spent 1 point, I think there was 1.1 million spent on that building less than seven years ago. I question where the 3.5 is going, to only serve eight to 14 veterans. Additionally, we've been asking for other communities to step up and help us with our homeless situation. I think it's called Prince House in Mantino, the veterans' home, not to capacity as of this day. Really. So, and not only that, it would give the veterans the support that they need if they're on the facility, along with transportation. So I think that, I mean, I must admit, it pulls at our heartstrings. When we think about the sacrifices that my brothers and sisters in arms have made for freedom in this country. But they want that freedom to be treated kindly and fair. So when we run out of eight to 14 beds, then what? Additionally, I have to say, as an alderman, it's my responsibility to my residents, to present to them a vibrant and growing city. And it's not just an economic thing that I oppose. It is in the best interest, I feel, of the growth of this city. Coming out of COVID, and the economic impact that it's had, we have a business to the back of that place. And I think we could be a little more resourceful with that location. Additionally, I think we got another building that's not even spending as much money in housing twice as many residents. So yes, I am concerned about the money spent, but I'm also concerned about our veterans. What happened to eight, what happens after you hit number eight or number 14? To the number, to, as Mr. Aldrich said, will we consider the number that was given to homeless veterans? We are definitely, without question, doing them a disservice. So who goes into that house, me or you? And who chooses? And mine? I think that, I think that's something we ought to consider. If we're going to do something, do it right. Do it so it suits all homeless factors, not just eight to 14. That's all.
Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Cobb.
No.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
No.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Abstain to avoid potential consequences.
Malone Marshall.
No.
And Miss Barron? Oh my goodness. Barron?
I have an abstainance to potential consequences.
You know what, I already had that written, and I think that's why I skipped you. Sorry about that. Okay, we've got one. Seven i's, four nay's. Two extensions, one extension.
Seven four?
Seven four.
Okay. See, there is a need for eight for confirmation when it does come to a situation. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'll let legal explain.
Yeah, there are three situations in which a mayor gets to vote. The one that's applicable here is that there are seven of the elected, or half of the elected body will vote in a particular direction. In that case, because there's 14, there's seven. That means because an eighth vote is needed, the mayor is allowed to vote in this situation, because seven have voted in one way. So the mayor will record your vote to make a determination.
You need to call my name, I just told.
Mayor.
Aye. Next is item 12, new business. Item A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, handicap parking signs established at 492 North Union Avenue.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance? We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen i, zero nay.
Okay, that passes. Next is item C.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Article 7, Section 238 of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, Illinois, establishing a stop sign intersection at South Greenwood Avenue and East Merchant Street.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance? We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. We have a second from Alderman Barron. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
No.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen i, zero nay.
Okay, the ordinance passes. Next is item B.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Article 7, Section 238 of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, establishing a stop sign intersection at South Greenwood Avenue and East Eagle Street.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance? We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. We have a second from Alderman Barron. Any questions or comments regarding new ordinance? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. I have had, speaking with some residents near the intersection of Greenwood and Eagle, notified them that this may become a reality, and they requested that we, if possible, put some kind of light indicator or flashing signal there, just because this will be, there's not a stop sign in that general vicinity, so if that's possible, that we could sort of supplement the signage, just so people who aren't used to stopping in case they run the light, we just want to avoid any accidents that way if possible, for at least the first few weeks of the sign being there.
So I'm going to defer to Alderman, Alderman, to Mr. Pigish. I do know we've done flags in the past. I don't know how we handle that with a flashing light. That almost requires power, in a sense.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we might want to discuss a little more about flashing lights there, because there are residents around there, but I know when we did the ones on River Street, I believe there were flags up temporarily. I don't remember if there were temporary lights, flashing lights there or not. If there were, that's something we can definitely look at, but we'll, we'll do something, so. Okay, sounds good. We'll get with.
I believe, if I remember correctly, we did flags, and then we put up a barricade sign that had stop ahead. I think we did that temporarily to let residents or let motorists know that, as they were approaching that intersection, that, kind of give them a second warning that the stop sign was coming. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen i, zero nay.
Okay, that passes. Next is item C.
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a, oh, I'll see. Ordinance amending Chapter 32, Article 7, Section 238 of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, Illinois, establishing a stop sign intersection at South Greenwood Avenue and East Merchant Street.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance, to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall, is there a second? Second from Alderwoman Lewis. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen i, zero nay.
Okay, the ordinance passes. Next is item D.
An ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium upon the issuance of business licenses for COVID-19 medical testing facilities until Monday, July 18, 2022.
Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rules for the interference of this ordinance tonight? Alderman Cobb?
Don't move.
So we have a motion from Alderman Cobb, we have a second from Alderman Crawford. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen i, zero nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Next is item D.
An ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium upon the issuance of business licenses for COVID-19 medical testing facilities until Monday, July 18, 2022.
Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rules for the interference of this ordinance tonight? Alderman Cobb? So we have a motion from Alderman Cobb, we have a second from Alderman Crawford. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen i, zero nay.
Okay, that passes. Next is item C.
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a, oh, I'll see. Ordinance amending Chapter 32, Article 7, Section 238 of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, Illinois, establishing a stop sign intersection at South Greenwood Avenue and East Merchant Street.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for approval? Alderman Cobb? We have a motion from Alderman Cobb, we have a second from Alderman Crawford. Just as we talked about this at the committee of all, I just want to kind of bring it up again. The biggest concern that we have here, it's not to suppress testing. Actually, Kankakee has more testing facilities than any of our local municipalities right now, with the hospitals, two Walgreens, the CVS, Aunt Martha's, I believe even, I think Duane Dean is even providing some testing and some other stuff. Our concern is, what we're having right now is, you may have seen in the news here in the last five days, and this is, we even talked about before, it's these pop-up COVID testing centers that are, they do not have to be licensed, they're just popping up in different types of businesses. There's no plan of where the reporting is getting back to the county health department. Some people aren't getting a test, and then there's also problems with just how they're handling people that are getting in line and blocking other businesses and stuff. So basically, what we want to do, similar to other municipalities, is put a temporary moratorium on this, so that we can change our code that requires medical testing facilities to go through a conditional use permit, and make sure that we have the proper protocols in place to protect the public, and make sure they're getting the best thing, not only for the surrounding neighbors, but also for the testing as being required. We've had several people, again, that have just wanted to, you know, car lots, different stores, grocery stores, that want to just pop up and start do testing. As you know, the Attorney General for the State of Illinois, we have one facility here in Kankakee that was causing great problems in our town. They'd come out and had all them closed here recently in the Chicagoland area for at least a week, while they tried to figure out the situation. And then also, the Better Business Bureau had rated them as an F for providing service to the customers. So, again, this is not trying to suppress COVID testing at all. In fact, there is quite a bit of still COVID testing facilities available in Kankakee. There's still three other ones that I would call as the pop-up testing centers, if that's what someone chooses. It's just more of making sure that we protect our surrounding residents, neighbors, and our businesses, and put that forward. So, is there any questions or comments from the council? Alderman Jones?
Yes, sir, thanks, Mayor. Um, a question.
Yes, sir, thanks, Mayor. Um, a question. The sites are open now. Are they going to be shut down? Are they open?
They're, they're, they're open. So, they, they had applied for a business license, received it, and so they will continue to be open.
As of tonight?
They're still open now, as we speak. The one place did close their doors temporarily because they closed all the facilities around the Illinois area temporarily, but could they be back open? Yes, but they do have to follow the rules and the regulations that we have in place for our sidewalks and public areas. Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, is, I know that Riverside, Tinkers, Walgreens, CVS, some of these places have, you have to have appointments to do that. And some of the people just don't have the time to, to do this. And my question is this, that we have the Health Department involved in this, and the Health Department has a board about this, this particular item where we're establishing a, anything. We're teaching them saying, we're not going to have the testing site to tell a business license, but should they have a health, I mean, they, they got a license, they even took an order just to have.
They're, they're not required to have any license with the State of Illinois or the local Health, Health Department. They can just get their business license, enter into a contract with a lab facility, and start testing.
They don't have, they don't, we don't have, they don't have to tell us about the lab. They don't have to tell anybody what lab they use.
They disclose which lab they're using, but that's it. And it's usually an out-of-town lab. And I'd be happy if going through the process, if Mr. Hoffman, if you would maybe also talk to us the process that we could go through. We put in here a six-month timeframe. We think we can get this accomplished, and probably, I'm going to let you decide, but you thought within less than three months or less, we thought we could get that accomplished. But if you could explain the process of how we would bring this back.
Sure. So, right now, this only totally doesn't address the facilities right now. We got provisions for medical funding, but medical, we got the personnel, right, trained nurses, nurse practitioners, doctors, all that. That doesn't exist in these facilities, right? So, they need to amend the zoning code and provide some definitions for this type of facility. I would suggest that we treat them as a conditional use. If we do it as a conditional use, we can attach conditions to that condition, just whether it's need having waiting lists, if that's important on a location, or understanding what lab they're using, we can really get the eligible to ask for the application. We can attach those things, as long as they're reasonable and related to that project. So, that conditional use process will give us the ability to allow the ones that are appropriate, not a lot of ones that are not appropriate in some way. So, we could amend the zoning code. We're going to have to publish for public hearing. I have a public hearing before the planning board. I'll make a recommendation that will come forward, you, and then to the zoning board. So, that whole process will take roughly three months, depending on how much debate there is going to have.
Alderman Brown.
Is there a liability to the city recognize the pop-up testing site?
Um, I don't, I don't know. I wouldn't.
That's an opportunity. I appreciate the question, but it's very broad, so it's hard to answer. And generally, the city, there's protections of the Illinois for the near the accident, that's what I would actually do. So, while anything's possible, I would say any facility associated with the license would be minimal.
We did today also, we did put up on the website, there were some frequently asked questions that came from Governor Pritzker's office in the State of Illinois about these COVID testing sites. We did post that today up on the website for the public to look at. And additionally, it was announced today, and I believe Mary Lou was one of the first, she put out that you now, we're going to put the link up on the website, the federal government, you can order your free for testing to your home for free. You can sign up on the website. That came out today. Mary Lou mentioned that she signed up for it and was able to get that executed all the way today, and it sends to your home within seven to 11 days. So, the government has stepped up and provided more additional at-home testing for everybody, free of charge. So, there is still plenty of opportunities to be able to get tested in the area, and in particular, Kankakee. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two points. First, I think we do owe it to our residents and our businesses to regulate this. As you said, these applications are sort of coming in fast and furious, and I think doing nothing is a disservice to our, the people who are, live and work in our community. And secondly, I think, as Mr. Hoffman outlined, the timeframe, we, we would have six months to do this. I think we should purposely move as fast as we can to do it, and I think that's the plan, but that's important to do that as well.
That was the goal. I had, I had asked if we could do it in six weeks, and he said, let's just have a little bit, couple more extra weeks, but yes, I think the goal is to see if we can move as quick as possible. And if that means calling a special meeting, then we'll call a special meeting. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
No.
Twelve ayes, twelve ayes, one nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Next is item E.
A recommendation to accept an engineering proposal from Pigash Engineering in the amount of $193,080 for the Northeast Ridge Drive roadway and drainage improvement project.
So, this is for the creation of the roadway from East Court Street into East Gate Industrial Park. It would be part of the Ricky Rockets project. So, Neil, do you have anything you want to add to this? This is for the engineering fees of that project. We have, this money would be coming out of our capital money, correct?
I believe so. I believe this was included in the bond allowances as one of the projects, and this is for construction staking and construction engineering, so.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation from Pigash Engineering? We have a motion from Alderman Brown. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Standing with a vote down with the legislature.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, zero nays, one extension.
Okay, recommend, the acceptance of the proposal passes. Next is item F.
A recommendation to accept an engineering proposal from Pigash Engineering in the amount of $129,840 for the Francine Drive Drainage and Pavement Improvement Project.
This is for the project that we talked about in the Committee of the Hall, and had recommended at City Council. The thought process here is by having two projects so close to each other on the east side, that our engineer thought that we can go out for a bid on these, and maybe we might be able to get a, somebody that might be trying to get both of these projects and give a very aggressive bid for both projects, be able to do them at the same time, so. Is there a motion to accept the engineering proposal? Alderman Brown?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Brown. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Standing with a vote down with the legislature.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one extension.
Okay, the engineering proposal is accepted. Next is item G, appointments.
Jessica Andrade for the Planning Board.
So, we do have, we do have one opening on the Planning Board. If you remember recently, Mr. Beverly Lou Hood, we appointed her to Chairman of the Planning Commission, so that leaves an open seat there. The recommendation is for Jessica Andrade to fill that position. I believe her resume was included in the packet, and I'm excited that when we did talk to her about some of this, she's been watching a lot of these planning commissions for a long time, and is kind of already up to speed on everything that's happening and moving forward. So, is there a motion for the approval of the appointment? Alderman Navarez? We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Andrade, you are here in the audience. If you could stand up and introduce yourself to everybody? Okay, next is item 13, motions and resolutions. Item A.
We have a resolution honoring Haley Martinez.
So, if, Ms. Haley Martinez, if you can come up to the front?
Okay, I'm going to read the resolution honoring Haley Martinez. Whereas Haley Martinez, a 12-year-old entrepreneur and Kankakee resident, became an inspiration to all children when the governor signed Haley's Law, which ensures that the state of, in the state of Illinois, children under the age of 16 can sell non-alcoholic mixed beverages on private property or in public parks. And whereas in the summer of 2017, Haley Martinez opened up Haley Bug Lemonade in front of her house to raise money for college. She sold 50-cent cups of lemonade to many of her neighbors and friends. When the stand was shut down, Haley refused to give up on her dream of running her own business. Whereas Haley's lemonade stand was rescued when the good people of Kankakee pulled together to help her. Friends, neighbors, and strangers, such as former Alderman woman Gloria Kennedy, former Alderman Tyler Tallon Stevie Hunter, as well as Robert Snipes, Walter Schneider, James Taylor, Andrew Wheeler, lobbied for her on her, on her behalf to help secure Haley's dream. Senator Patrick Joyce sponsored Haley's Law, and on March 3, 2020, Haley testified before the Illinois State Public Health Committee, urging them to endorse the law that would allow young entrepreneurs to sell lemonade. Haley's Law became a reality on January 1, 2022. Last July, Mayor Curtis, Mayor Chris Curtis and Alderman Lance Marzak delivered a brand-new state-of-the-art lemonade stand to assist her in, into taking her lemonade venture to the next level. According to her mother, Eva Martinez, Haley turned lemons into lemonade. Whereas Haley's advocacy for young entrepreneurs received national recognition when she performed at Center Court for the Chicago Bulls, was featured in numerous newspaper and magazine articles such as the New York Best Times, the Daily Journal, and appeared on CBS News locally and nationally. She also presented her story at a national conference in Nashville, Tennessee. Haley is now an eighth grader at Bishop McNamara Catholic School. When she grows up, she would like to be a doctor specializing in obstetrics and gynecology. Haley is looking forward to her 2022 lemonade season. Therefore, be it resolved by Mayor Christopher W. Curtis and the City Council of the City of Kankakee, do hereby deem it an honor to recognize Haley Martinez's contributions to the City of Kankakee and express their appreciation for her determination to make our city a better place to live in and to drink lemonade. Her legacy will live on through the law named after her, adopted this 18th day of January, 2022.
Is there a motion to, is there a motion to accept this resolution? Okay, we'll say that's unanimous. In a second, the same thing. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Congratulations, Haley. So, effective June, effective January 1, this law went into effect, and I can, I've had the honor of hanging out with this young woman, playing kickball games at the library. We've done some trick-or-treating and some things. And one of the most exciting things about her is not her, not just her enthusiasm and her drive for success in life, but it's her smile. And it's, you know, right now, you can see in her eyes right now. She's, she's one of those kids that, we need to let her also be a kid too, because her best time is when you see her just having fun and being a teenager and interacting with her friends. That's what it makes us all smile. So, I tell you, keep your dreams, do your success, but most importantly, remain a kid and chase, chase those dreams that a kid can only think of when they chase. So, congratulations. Can you get a picture?
Should I move this, maybe?
Okay, come on up here.
You gotta have a laugh, yeah.
It's the first time I've seen her without a loss of words, so that, that's not going. Congratulations. So, and I believe, is there, on the way out, or is there some questions?
Oh, yes.
So, we've got, when you walk out of here, I think she's got, got a sample of her product, correct? All right, so I'm going to get, get some on the way out, so congratulations. Okay, next on the item is item B.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the city's allocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds pertaining to the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund.
Okay, this is, at the December meeting of the Committee of Hall, we approved these funds, and I'm trying to pull it up so I don't miss each one of them, but if I remember correctly, I've got most of this in my memory here, but let me just pull it up. At that meeting, we allocated $1.375 million, broken down as follows. $500,000 for technology and equipment to allow law enforcement to more effectively respond to the gun violence. $300,000 for the implementation and programming of Kankakee United. $75,000 for the programming and setup of the Kankakee Strong Neighborhood Home. $200,000 for the City of Kankakee's Fire Explorer Program and Fire Internship Program. And $300,000 for the implementation and marketing of the Kankakee Riverfront Society. Those, those are the total amounts. Again, these are allocations. To date, none of that money has actually been spent. All we have done is, the full amount is still in the account, but we have allocated these funds for different projects. but we have allocated, uh, these funds for different projects. So, is there a motion for approval of the 1.375 million? We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. We have a second from Alderwoman Barron. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen, I, zero, names.
Okay, uh, resolution passes. Uh, we do have a need for an executive session tonight. Um, we've got a little bit to talk about, so, um, I'm gonna let everybody take a quick break. We'll come back in five minutes. But is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body? And also there is a pending, um, litigation. And also under union-related contracts, is there a motion? We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Hold up everybody, we gotta do roll call here.
I second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen, I, zero, names.
Okay. Everybody wants to take a quick break and then we'll meet back here? All right.
Yeah, can I just get a?
Can I, can I just listen to the microphone?
The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[17.00][17.00]1. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[24.00][24.00]2. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[31.00][31.00]3. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[38.00][38.00]4. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[45.00][45.00]5. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[52.00][52.00]6. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[59.00][59.00]7. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[66.00][66.00]8. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[73.00][73.00]9. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[80.00][80.00]10. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[87.00][87.00]11. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[94.00][94.00]12. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[101.00][101.00]13. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[108.00][108.00]14. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[115.00][115.00]15. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[122.00][122.00]16. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[129.00][129.00]17. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[136.00][136.00]18. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[143.00][143.00]19. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[150.00][150.00]20. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[157.00][157.00]21. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[164.00][164.00]22. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[171.00][171.00]23. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[178.00][178.00]24. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[185.00][185.00]25. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[192.00][192.00]26. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[199.00][199.00]27. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[206.00][206.00]28. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[213.00][213.00]29. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[220.00][220.00]30. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[227.00][227.00]31. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[234.00][234.00]32. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[241.00][241.00]33. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[248.00][248.00]34. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[255.00][255.00]35. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[262.00][262.00]36. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[269.00][269.00]37. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[276.00][276.00]38. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[283.00][283.00]39. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[290.00][290.00]40. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[297.00][297.00]41. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[304.00][304.00]42. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[311.00][311.00]43. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[318.00][318.00]44. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[325.00][325.00]45. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[332.00][332.00]46. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[339.00][339.00]47. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[346.00][346.00]48. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[353.00][353.00]49. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[360.00][360.00]50. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[367.00][367.00]51. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[374.00][374.00]52. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[381.00][381.00]53. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[388.00][388.00]54. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[395.00][395.00]55. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[402.00][402.00]56. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[409.00][409.00]57. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[416.00][416.00]58. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[423.00][423.00]59. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[430.00][430.00]60. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[437.00][437.00]61. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[444.00][444.00]62. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[451.00][451.00]63. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[458.00][458.00]64. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[465.00][465.00]65. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[472.00][472.00]66. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[479.00][479.00]67. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[486.00][486.00]68. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[493.00][493.00]69. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[500.00][500.00]70. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[507.00][507.00]71. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[514.00][514.00]72. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[521.00][521.00]73. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[528.00][528.00]74. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[535.00][535.00]75. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[542.00][542.00]76. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[549.00][549.00]77. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[556.00][556.00]78. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[563.00][563.00]79. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[570.00][570.00]80. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[577.00][577.00]81. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[584.00][584.00]82. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[591.00][591.00]83. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[598.00][598.00]84. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[605.00][605.00]85. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[612.00][612.00]86. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[619.00][619.00]87. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[626.00][626.00]88. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[633.00][633.00]89. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[640.00][640.00]90. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[647.00][647.00]91. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[654.00][654.00]92. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[661.00][661.00]93. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[668.00][668.00]94. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[675.00][675.00]95. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[682.00][682.00]96. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[689.00][689.00]97. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[696.00][696.00]98. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[703.00][703.00]99. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[710.00][710.00]100. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[717.00][717.00]101. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[724.00][724.00]102. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[731.00][731.00]103. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[738.00][738.00]104. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[745.00][745.00]105. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[752.00][752.00]106. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[759.00][759.00]107. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[766.00][766.00]108. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[773.00][773.00]109. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[780.00][780.00]110. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[787.00][787.00]111. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[794.00][794.00]112. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[801.00][801.00]113. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[808.00][808.00]114. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[815.00][815.00]115. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[822.00][822.00]116. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[830.00][830.00]117. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[837.00][837.00]118. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[844.00][844.00]119. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[851.00][851.00]120. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[858.00][858.00]121. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[865.00][865.00]122. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[872.00][872.00]123. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[880.00][880.00]124. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[887.00][887.00]125. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[894.00][894.00]126. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[899.00][899.00]127. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[906.00][906.00]128. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[913.00][913.00]129. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[920.00][920.00]130. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[927.00][927.00]131. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[934.00][934.00]132. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[941.00][941.00]133. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[948.00][948.00]134. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[955.00][955.00]135. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[962.00][962.00]136. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[970.00][970.00]137. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[977.00][977.00]138. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[984.00][984.00]139. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[991.00][991.00]140. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[998.00][998.00]141. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1005.00][1005.00]142. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1012.00][1012.00]143. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1019.00][1019.00]144. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1026.00][1026.00]145. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1033.00][1033.00]146. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1040.00][1040.00]147. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1047.00][1047.00]148. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1054.00][1054.00]149. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1061.00][1061.00]150. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1068.00][1068.00]151. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1075.00][1075.00]152. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1082.00][1082.00]153. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1089.00][1089.00]154. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1096.00][1096.00]155. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1103.00][1103.00]156. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1110.00][1110.00]157. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1117.00][1117.00]158. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1124.00][1124.00]159. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1131.00][1131.00]160. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1138.00][1138.00]161. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1145.00][1145.00]162. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1152.00][1152.00]163. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1159.00][1159.00]164. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1166.00][1166.00]165. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1173.00][1173.00]166. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1180.00][1180.00]167. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1187.00][1187.00]168. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1194.00][1194.00]169. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1201.00][1201.00]170. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1208.00][1208.00]171. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1215.00][1215.00]172. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1222.00][1222.00]173. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1229.00][1229.00]174. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1236.00][1236.00]175. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1243.00][1243.00]176. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1250.00][1250.00]177. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1257.00][1257.00]178. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1264.00][1264.00]179. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1271.00][1271.00]180. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1278.00][1278.00]181. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1285.00][1285.00]182. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1292.00][1292.00]183. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1300.00][1300.00]184. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1307.00][1307.00]185. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1314.00][1314.00]186. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1321.00][1321.00]187. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1328.00][1328.00]188. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1335.00][1335.00]189. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1342.00][1342.00]190. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1349.00][1349.00]191. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1356.00][1356.00]192. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1363.00][1363.00]193. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1370.00][1370.00]194. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1377.00][1377.00]195. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1384.00][1384.00]196. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1391.00][1391.00]197. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1398.00][1398.00]198. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1405.00][1405.00]149. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1412.00][1412.00]150. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1419.00][1419.00]151. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1426.00][1426.00]152. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1433.00][1433.00]153. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1440.00][1440.00]154. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1447.00][1447.00]155. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1454.00][1454.00]156. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1461.00][1461.00]157. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1468.00][1468.00]158. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1475.00][1475.00]159. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1482.00][1482.00]160. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1489.00][1489.00]161. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1496.00][1496.00]162. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1503.00][1503.00]163. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1510.00][1510.00]164. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1517.00][1517.00]165. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1524.00][1524.00]166. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1531.00][1531.00]167. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1538.00][1538.00]168. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1545.00][1545.00]169. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1552.00][1552.00]170. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1559.00][1559.00]171. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1566.00][1566.00]172. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1573.00][1573.00]173. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1580.00][1580.00]174. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1587.00][1587.00]175. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1594.00][1594.00]176. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1601.00][1601.00]177. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1608.00][1608.00]178. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1615.00][1615.00]179. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1622.00][1622.00]180. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1629.00][1629.00]181. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1636.00][1636.00]182. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1643.00][1643.00]183. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1650.00][1650.00]184. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1657.00][1657.00]185. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1664.00][1664.00]186. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1671.00][1671.00]187. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1678.00][1678.00]188. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1685.00][1685.00]189. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1692.00][1692.00]190. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1699.00][1699.00]191. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1706.00][1706.00]192. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1713.00][1713.00]193. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1720.00][1720.00]194. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1727.00][1727.00]195. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1734.00][1734.00]196. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1741.00][1741.00]197. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1748.00][1748.00]198. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1755.00][1755.00]199. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1762.00][1762.00]200. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1769.00][1769.00]201. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1776.00][1776.00]202. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1783.00][1783.00]203. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1790.00][1790.00]204. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.[1797.00][1797.00]205. The wind is blowing strongly and the trees are shaking.
Um, so David in my office for like the last two or three weeks has been putting a list of all city properties that we own. So he's created that list. Uh, and there are some things like lift stations, detention ponds, things that we would not be getting rid of. Um, he is now making a sub-list that, um, is basically what I would call all properties that the city actually has deeded control to. Commercial, vacant lots, residential. Um, I just met with Barbie on Friday on that. I said I'd get that list to her, just make sure she looks with her list that she has. And then, yes, we are gonna put out, um, I'm hoping here in the next ten to fourteen days, if not sooner, some type of announcement of how we're going to handle those vacant lots and houses. But we just, we have to make sure that the details are going into what do we actually have deeded control to? That we can convey to other parties. So, um, Barbie had a list put together. Uh, David has patiently in between everything, been going and getting everything in details, tax ID numbers, what type of property is, is it commercial, industrial, residential vacant lot? And he's put that together. I think he was close to done with it. Um, last I talked to him was on Wednesday and then he was off on Friday. So I'll follow up with him again on that.
And one more quick thing. Is it gonna have a process on how we're gonna give it out exactly?
Yeah, so Barbie's, Barbie's office is working on that with the plan. But yes, we've got a process of how we handle structures and how we handle vacant lots. And we still got some of that that we're trying to put together so we can, and then we'll post it on the website for everybody for review. So. Alderman Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things here. Start off with, uh, we are gonna have an ordinance meeting on, um, January twenty-fifth, Tuesday at five thirty. In our ordinance meeting, we will be discussing the assigned ordinance that we've been working on for quite a while. And then also we'll be discussing a possibility of some type of ordinance for COVID vaccine shots also. So, given that, that'd be great. Uh, secondly, uh, Saturday, January eighth, in our award, we have Smart Wash opened up a new laundry man facility. It's a state-of-the-art laundry man facility that has a exclusive ozone power wash. Whatever wash you get, it'll, all coronavirus, you know, kill bacteria. Uh, it's a really, really nice laundry man to get a chance to go out and work in, work in. And then, thirdly, uh, I did it on West Court Street. Sixteen, or West Court, sixteen, or sixteen, the old family, uh, video. Right, like from Murkau. And, uh, thirdly, I'd like to thank the city council for passing the vote tonight. The mayor, I'm proud of you, uh, you showed great leadership, so, thank you.
Alderman Low Marshall.
We will be having a cold meeting on Thursday. We will be here in the chambers at five thirty.
Thank you. Alderman Johnson.
Um, I would just like to thank the council members who reached out to my family and offering to, to us. Very much appreciated.
Uh, department heads, any comments or, uh, Chief LaRoche?
I just wanna, um, bring to everyone's attention that on January thirty-first, Monday, at seven PM, the police department has challenged the fire department to a charity basketball. This is, should be a fun event. Uh, it's a fundraiser for, I believe, the Bradley officers. All the proceeds will go to the Bradley officer. Uh, we'll have a fifty-fifty, split the pot. There'll be plenty of door prizes and a few other baskets to bid on. Please come out and watch the fire department, pay us off, these are, uh, and it'll be for a good cause.
What is the location?
We're at Armory.
What day is that again?
Monday, the thirty-first.
So me and you go play later? Chief basketball will be the center.
They, they, they wanted us to jump ball, but I decided no.
Do you have a reminder you can send it?
Yeah, we'll send it on a flyer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Mr. Biggish?
Thank you, Mayor. I just kinda wanted to give a quick update on all the projects that are gonna be happening this year. We're gonna pretty much have this town torn up for most of the year. So I just wanna make everyone aware of that. Um, it's a good thing. Um, but we have the South Skylar Avenue, um, bid opening on Friday, this Friday. It's a state letting, so that's through IDOT. Um, then, what was just approved tonight for East Ridge Drive and Francine Drive, we're planning to have those bid openings on, uh, February fifteenth. So those will be on the agenda for approval, hopefully at the second meeting in February, which I believe is Tuesday because it's President's Day. Um, and then Hobby Avenue is slated to be on the, uh, April IDOT letting at the end of April. So, um, also in conjunction with that, Aqua is gonna be doing a massive water main project down Hobby this year. Because of the Hobby Avenue project and Nycore Gas, I believe, is doing approximately about seventy-five hundred feet of gas main replacement and upgrades in the seventh ward, um, north of Court Street and east of Hobby. So we're coordinating with all the utility companies for all these projects. There's a lot of moving parts, but, um, all in all, that's about twelve million dollars of investment that we're gonna see into the city for, for the city's projects. That doesn't count, uh, Nycore's investment. So, um, exciting times. I think it's, it's gonna be a lot of really much needed and great improvements for the city. So we're excited to be a part of it, so.
Thank you, sir. Any other department heads? Uh, Alderman Swanson.
Sorry, I just wanted to piggyback on the fundraiser because Alderman are asking a lot of questions about it. David from the mayor's office, they actually sent us all an email. And they're doing an Alderman basket. So if you guys wanna contribute to it, you can give money to the mayor or to Dave, bring it up to David. Cause they're gonna put one together and they don't know what they're gonna do until they see how much they're gonna make. Well, to donate to the fundraiser.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll.
You wanna contribute to the fundraiser, the basket for an auction. Do you have an offer?
Right, we'll take it. We need some calm guys, so.
Yeah. So. I did, I, I did wanna follow up with, uh, Alderman Swanson's comment. I kinda wanted to bring that up tonight is, um, you should have all received an email. I'll have David send it again. Uh, the, basically, we'll call it the administration building is putting together a basket. Uh, so everybody in the administration building, and we're including the Alderman in that. Any, uh, whether you've got prizes or you've gotta wanna make a monetary contribution, uh, we hope to put together a fairly significant basket so that they can auction that off at the basketball game. And as I mentioned, all the proceeds are gonna go to the Bradley's officers' families. Um, so we still have time with that. We're not sure exactly what we're gonna do yet because we wanna see what everybody contributes into it. Um, but I, I said I'll also make sure that we're well represented, that we have one of the better baskets there. So, um, if you can reach out to David this week so we can make sure we're, we have that put together next week, um, so they can significantly, uh, so they can properly advertise that and hopefully raise some good funds to that basketball game, so. Um, I also did wanna mention, uh, so that was good to mention about the donation. Again, today it was announced, uh, that you can order free at-home testing kits. You will get, uh, four at-home testing kits. They say they'll ship within seven to twelve days. Uh, you go to covidtest.gov. And that's covidtest.gov. So if you wanna get on that and order that so you have those on hand, uh, hopefully you don't have to use them. But maybe they're available for when you do have that need that you need to test and see if, uh, if you're not feeling so well. So I highly suggest that. And we'll put that up on the websites for the public also and get that out, so. Um, with that, uh, we've got several committee meetings. I encourage everybody to continue to make those committee meetings. There's gonna be a lot of stuff, uh, coming up in the next several committee meetings that we need to get ready, um, for the spring, including, uh, I know license and franchise is out a couple of weeks. Uh, but that's a very important meeting because we need to get everything finalized because David is ready to start the liquor license applications for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. He would like to get those mailed out in February so that they can be collecting those in late February, March and April. Make sure that everybody's in compliance by May first, so. Uh, again, we have code, uh, we've got the ordinance meeting, so please try to make those committee meetings, so. With that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Vote.
We have a motion from Alderman Crawford, a second from Alderman Crawford. Roll call. For section. I should say, uh, vote.
Brown. Would you give that motion a second?
Uh, first was, um, Alderman Naveras, second was Alderman Crawford.
Thank you. Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye.
Marza.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Cologne Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero ayes.
Okay, we're back in open session. Uh, there is no action resulting from the executive section, session. So we'll go on to item seventeen, which is city council member comments. Alderman Naveras.
I just wanted to make an announcement that Saturday, this coming Saturday, uh, in my department's public health, they're gonna have vaccinations. Uh, three sixty-seven thousand, however, the new rule. If you want to invite constituents or anybody to be back, uh, hoping to get a vaccination, we'll be there for you.
Do you have a flyer on that or anything?
Yes, please do.
If you want to send that to David, we'll have him post that on the city website.
My way. Thank you. Oh, then, do you send that to all council members if possible? That way, we could send it out.
Or if you get it to David, I'll make sure David gets it to everybody.
Definitely.
One last thing for Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, can we have, can we ask legal to give us a, you take a, uh, I don't know, a piece of paper saying when the mayor can vote? Because I just sometimes I don't feel that I don't know what, what is you can vote in, what is you can't. So I don't know because I think that gets us off guard a lot of times.
Sure, I think there's three reasons, but we, if you can have him write a, I'll have him do a real quick synopsis, but then we'll have him to put something in writing and we'll get it to Alderman.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. If that comes from the statute and.
We'll just, I have a little blurb of copy. If, if, okay, this, that doesn't, we don't have anything in our, in our, in our statute or that, that, period of that anyway. We don't rule nothing where. Okay, if you can get that to us, it would be great.
Alderman Jones.
Yes, sir. Uh, real, uh, real quick, uh, city properties. Uh, did you ever get that list right? I know you've been busy. Did you get that right? Because, uh, I've got a lot of constituents asking, not even in my one, but all around wants to know, you know, what we're gonna do with the lots and all of that. Because I told you, we were promising that, you know, your plan for how many, how many lots and some of the property that, you know, we have as a state to get the liability away from the city getting back to the factory. But I said, I know you've been busy.
I know. So we're, we're close, give you an update, we're close to it. Um, so David in my office for like the last two or three weeks has been putting a list of all city properties that we own. So he's created that list. Uh, and there are some things like lift stations, detention ponds, things that we would not be getting rid of. Um, he is now making a sub-list that, um, is basically what I would call all properties that the city actually has deeded control to. Commercial, vacant lots, residential. Um, I just met with Barbie on Friday on that. I said I'd get that list to her, just make sure she looks with her list that she has. And then, yes, we are gonna put out, um, I'm hoping here in the next ten to fourteen days, if not sooner, some type of announcement of how we're going to handle those vacant lots and houses. But we just, we have to make sure that the details are going into what do we actually have deeded control to? That we can convey to other parties. So, um, Barbie had a list put together. Uh, David has patiently in between everything, been going and getting everything in details, tax ID numbers, what type of property is, is it commercial, industrial, residential vacant lot? And he's put that together. I think he was close to done with it. Um, last I talked to him was on Wednesday and then he was off on Friday. So I'll follow up with him again on that.
And one more quick thing. Is it gonna have a process on how we're gonna give it out exactly?
Yeah, so Barbie's, Barbie's office is working on that with the plan. But yes, we've got a process of how we handle structures and how we handle vacant lots. And we still got some of that that we're trying to put together so we can, and then we'll post it on the website for everybody for review. So. Alderman Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things here. Uh, start off with, uh, we are gonna have an ordinance meeting on, um, January twenty-fifth, Tuesday at five thirty. In our ordinance meeting, we will be discussing the assigned ordinance that we've been working on for quite a while. And then also we'll be discussing a possibility of some type of ordinance for COVID vaccine shots also. So, keeping that, that'd be great. Uh, secondly, uh, Saturday, January eighth, in our award, we have Smart Wash opened up a new, uh, laundry man facility. It's a state-of-the-art laundry man facility that has a exclusive ozone power wash. Whatever wash you get, it'll, all coronavirus, you know, kill bacteria. Uh, it's a really, really nice laundry man to get a chance to go out and work in, work in. And then, thirdly, uh, what? Uh, I did it on West Court Street. Sixteen, or West Court, sixteen, or sixteen, the old family, uh, video. Right, like from Murkau. And, uh, thirdly, I'd like to thank the city council for, uh, passing the vote tonight. The mayor, I'm proud of you, uh, you showed great leadership, so, thank you.
Alderman Low Marshall.
We will be having a cold meeting on Thursday. We will be here in the chambers at five thirty.
Thank you. Alderman Johnson.
Um, I would just like to thank the council members who reached out to my family and offering to, to us. Very much appreciated.
Uh, department heads, any comments or, uh, Chief LaRoche?
I just wanna, um, bring to everyone's attention that on January thirty-first, Monday, at seven PM, the police department has challenged the fire department to a charity basketball. This is, should be a fun event. Uh, it's a fundraiser for, I believe, the Bradley officers. All the proceeds will go to the Bradley officer. Uh, we'll have a fifty-fifty, split the pot. There'll be plenty of door prizes and a few other baskets to bid on. Please come out and watch the fire department, eat pants off, these are, uh, and it'll be for a good cause.
Where's the location?
We're at Armory.
Oh, okay. What day is that again?
Monday, the thirty-first.
So me and you go play later? Chief basketball will be the center.
Yeah. They, they, they wanted us to jump ball, but I decided no.
Do you have a reminder you can send it?
Yeah, we'll send it on a flyer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Mr. Biggish?
Thank you, Mayor. I just kinda wanted to give a quick update on all the projects that are gonna be happening this year. We're gonna pretty much have this town torn up for most of the year. So I just wanna make everyone aware of that. Um, it's a good thing. Um, but we have the South Skylar Avenue, um, bid opening on Friday, this Friday. It's a state letting, so that's through IDOT. Um, then, what was just approved tonight for East Ridge Drive and Francine Drive, we're planning to have those bid openings on, uh, February fifteenth. So those will be on the agenda for approval, hopefully at the second meeting in February, which I believe is Tuesday because it's President's Day. Um, and then Hobby Avenue is slated to be on the, uh, April IDOT letting at the end of April. So, um, also in conjunction with that, Aqua is gonna be doing a massive water main project down Hobby this year. Because of the Hobby Avenue project and Nycore Gas, I believe, is doing approximately about seventy-five hundred feet of gas main replacement and upgrades in the seventh ward, um, north of Court Street and east of Hobby. So we're coordinating with all the utility companies for all these projects. There's a lot of moving parts, but, um, all in all, that's about twelve million dollars of investment that we're gonna see into the city for, for the city's projects. That doesn't count, uh, Nycore's investment, so, um, exciting times. I think it's, it's gonna be a lot of really much needed and great improvements for the city. So we're excited to be a part of it, so.
Thank you, sir. Any other department heads? Uh, Alderman Swanson.
Sorry, I just wanted to piggyback on the fundraiser because Alderman are asking a lot of questions about it. David from the mayor's office, they actually sent us all an email. And they're doing an Alderman basket. So if you guys wanna contribute to it, you can give money to the mayor or to Dave, bring it up to David. Cause they're gonna put one together and they don't know what they're gonna do until they see how much they're gonna make.
Oh, I'm glad?
Well, to donate to the fundraiser.
Fundraiser.
Oh.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll.
You wanna contribute to the fundraiser, the basket for an auction. Do you have an offer?
Right, we'll take it. We need some calm guys, so.
Yeah.
So. I did, I, I did wanna follow up with, uh, Alderman Swanson's comment. I kinda wanted to bring that up tonight is, um, you should have all received an email. I'll have David send it again. Uh, the, basically, we'll call it the administration building is putting together a basket. Uh, so everybody in the administration building, and we're including the Alderman in that. Any, uh, whether you've got prizes or you've gotta wanna make a monetary contribution, uh, we hope to put together a, a fairly significant basket so that they can auction that off at the basketball game. And as I mentioned, all the proceeds are gonna go to the Bradley's officers' families. Um, so we still have time with that. We're not sure exactly what we're gonna do yet because we wanna see what everybody contributes into it. Um, but I, I said I'll also make sure that we're well represented, that we have one of the better baskets there, so. Um, if you can reach out to David this week so we can make sure we're, we have that put together next week, um, so they can significantly, uh, so they can properly advertise that and hopefully raise some good funds to that basketball game, so. Um, I also did wanna mention, uh, so that was good to mention about the donation. Again, today it was announced, uh, that you can order free at-home testing kits.